All right. It's 7:02. We better get started. All right, I now call the August 6th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by our Erlanger Police Chaplain, Brian Nevins. Thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Thank you. There we go. If you would, please join me in prayer. "Our Lord and God, we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, in the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. Thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, for this privilege of gathering and self-government, recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We thank you for the hope that comes with each new day. We ask that our city officials be protective of those precious and very expensive rights that have been guarded by brave men and women, that they take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve, without personal agendas or pursuits, that they be men and women of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. In your word, you promise that if any needed wisdom, to simply ask, and you will give it generously. So with that, we pray for our Mayor Fettie, for our city manager, for this assembled council. We ask that you hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for our Chiefs, Raider, and Godsey, and all our first responders. We ask that you keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. And we thank you for their service. In your grace, grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens, and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families, dear Lord. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. And we pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger. And I ask all these things, in the most blessed name of Jesus. Amen."
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America, consider the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, et cetera.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Nicely, present. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Reckers? Ms. Jasper Lucas? Ms. Wilson?
Here.
All right, thank you. You've received a copy of the minutes for the July 2nd, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Mr. Cahill, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. You've also received a copy for tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Nicely? Mr. Cahill, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, so our special presentation this evening, our first one, is our Business Spotlight. It was going to be Erling House, however, they aren't able to make it this evening, but I do want to give them a shout-out, because once again, they are our title sponsor for our Erlanger Summer Send-Off. So, we are very, very appreciative of their support. They've been with us since the very beginning, and this is the fourth year running for this really special event. So, we are very, very happy to have Erling House within our community. All right, our second special presentation, we have Tara Johnson-Gnome here from the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. Thank you so much. Can you just press the little button? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for having me and my colleagues today, members of council, members of the community. We are here from the Northern Kentucky Area Development District to do some outreach. We are a kind of behind-the-scenes organization in many ways. And so, with a new strategic plan passed by our Board of Directors, of which the mayor is one, this year, we are excited to kick off an initiative where we are visiting all 60 of our cities and counties across our eight-county region. And so with that, just wanted to share a little bit about the Area Development District, in particular, some of the direct services that we offer. And I do have Ann Wildman here. She is our Associate Director for Aging and Disability Services, to share some of the services that might be of interest to community members. And I also have our Director of Finance Administration, Chris Corba, just in case, for some reason, you all would have any financial questions for us. So, I'll just go ahead and kick it off, but certainly would entertain any questions or discussion that you all would like to have. So, if you are not aware of us, the Northern Kentucky Area Development District was formed in the early 1970s, and we are a quasi-governmental organization. We are written into Kentucky Revised Statute, and we were developed purely to be a technical assistance organization to our communities. We are part of a network of area development districts. Every county in Kentucky is a part of one of the 15 area development districts. Initially, our services were limited to local government services, like public administration and community development planning, and we do continue those today. We work with city staff, and the mayor, from Sherry, and Mark, and Mr. Glenn, on things like tax rate calculation, personnel policy, things of that kind, revenue studies, anything that a city, or county, or even a special district, like a fire district, might need. Two things that are a little bit more broad and regional in scope, like hazard mitigation planning, water planning to support local utilities. Some of our local utilities, like the Water District and Sanitation District here in the northernmost part of our region, maybe, you know, they are very fully staffed and don't necessarily need as much assistance, but we do serve eight counties, and so some of our southern counties and their utilities need a little bit more help with that. So, we do have a wide range of those kinds of services, but we, and we also staff a number of groups, like the City-County Management Association, the Ethics Authority. Thanks again to the mayor for serving as Chair of that group, and that's a great way that we can pull resource, help communities pull their resources together. Over the years, we have grown in scope, because we became known as a place that regional solutions could be found, shared services, and we have a lot of technical expertise in state and federal grant compliance. So, we also run workforce development services, helping employers and job seekers find one another, and particularly helping job seekers break down barriers that might be keeping them from finding gainful employment, like maybe they need extra training, or they need help with transportation, or possibly childcare, or something of that sort. So, we do have a number of career centers that we staff and fund through federal funds across our region. Very happy to report, one of those great partnerships is actually with the Kent County Public Library here in Erlanger. Very, very proud to be able to work so closely with them. We also recently launched a new employer-focused initiative called NKY Works, in partnership with the eight fiscal courts, as well as B-N-K-Y. It's a really nice way to help employers find the talent that they need in a very tight workforce market at the moment. And then, wanted to just go briefly into our strategic plan, and then we're going to come back to Aging and Disability Services, because Ann is going to take a moment and really dive into those services, so that you all can let your constituents know of what's out there. So, back to our board for just a moment. They did pass a strategic plan, technically in May, and it started in July, really focusing on digging into our mission of collaboration, empowerment, and convening. And so, we want to make sure that our community is more aware of the services that we do provide. Often, those programs that we have, they don't come with marketing funds. And so, sometimes, we're kind of a good, well-kept secret, but we don't want to be that secret. We want our community to always know what resources are available to them, which is why we're out and about today. And I should have said, we are also the fiscal agent for a couple of groups, including the Office of Drug Control Policy, so I should have mentioned that when I talked about our list of resources. We have been charged with, by our board, to leverage our varied funding sources and broad expertise to enhance communication, collaboration, and customer service across all of our program areas, resulting in meaningful connections, strategic decision-making, and positive impact for the region. So, we're looking at things like board operations, staffing alignment, and customer service, and how we can best be the programs that our communities need. We don't do any of this for ourselves. This is all designed to respond to whatever the community says is of most need at the moment. We have already started on addressing some of these strategic planned initiatives. We just received a new four-year grant from the DURF Foundation, which will allow us to provide additional community development planning services across our eight-county region. And again, we're out and about, having these conversations, listening, and learning more. So, really, you have at your desk a little handout. I think the most important part is actually on the back. It shows who the board is, how to reach us if you ever have questions, and it shows the physical scope of, you know, everything from the career centers, the senior centers, our commodities warehouse, and the resource lines at the very top. If you ever need assistance, certainly you can call our main number. You can call our Aging and Disability Resource Center that Ann will talk about. We have also, NKY Works is the program that you can call if you are an employer needing talent. And we have on here the help desk, which I'm pretty sure is just if you need IT assistance, so I'm not sure why that's on there. But, anyway, I'd like to bring Ann up for just a moment, because she has some really helpful information to share. Ann?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Wildman, and I'm the Associate Director of Aging and Disability Services at the Area Development District. I'm in my 19th year. Fun fact, I grew up in Erlanger. So, Erlanger is a city that is near and dear to my heart. I have a lot of memories here, so I just wanted to mention that. This is a really important city to me, really important place. So, wanted to talk a little bit about Aging and Disability Services, because I know that there are a lot of older adults in the city of Erlanger, and people who have needs. So, we provide a multitude of services as a designated area agency on aging. First of all, I want to talk a little bit about our Aging and Disability Resource Center. We have four full-time staff. Well, we have three right now, and a fourth that is joining us in a few short weeks, so we will be fully staffed. And we, those individuals answer the phone all day long, take calls. I think last fiscal year, we took about 12,000 calls, and basically, that's our front door to all of our services that we provide, as well as providing information to the community about all Aging and Disability Services, and helping people with any questions that they might have. It's a great service that we provide, and we provide help to a whole lot of people. So, and that number is on the sheet that Tara handed out. Additionally, we provide in-home services. We fund 10 senior centers in our region. The closest one to this area is Elsmere Senior Center, so not too far. And we have a large meal program, home-delivered meals, congregate meals. We have a big Medicaid waiver program. And then, we provide nursing home ombudsman services, and that is staff that go in and protect the rights of nursing home residents. And as you know, you have several nursing homes, nursing facilities in Erlanger, in the Erlanger area. So, we have staff that are going in and out of those facilities on a regular basis, and assisting those residents. So, wanted to feature one of the, one of the programs that we had for a very long time. It went away in 2017, and this program got revived last year, and that is our Kentucky Caregiver Program. Our Kentucky Caregiver Program is for grandparents who are raising grandchildren. Does anybody in the room know anyone who is a grandparent who's raising a grandchild? There are a lot of grandparents out there that are raising grandchildren, and we see a lot come across, come across our agency. So, this program provides assistance to low-income grandparents who are raising their grandchildren. We are able to provide things like furniture, clothing, a multitude of things, school supplies. So, we, we are funded through the State General Funds to be able to provide this service. So, if you come across someone who is a grandparent who needs that assistance, please feel free to reach out to us, and we'll provide that assistance. Also, if you know an older adult who may need help, please contact our Aging and Disability Resource Center. Every year, we produce an Older Adults Resource Guide. We have those. I think they're on the table in the back, and please feel free to grab one of those. We will have a new guide coming out probably in the next two months, and we'll make sure and get those guides out to you all when those come out. But, this is our, our current guide, and, and it provides a lot of information on different services that are available in the community for older adults. Thank you so much. Happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Thank you for writing us with the scope of all your services that you provide for the community. And also, I wanted to let you know, I believe you have a new logo. It looks awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Our next special presentation is our Retirement Recognitions. Who's first? Dave's listed as first, so that means you're up. Dave, come on up, bud. You gotta stand front and center.
You were good. Here I am. Is there anything you wanted to say before I?
Dave, you've been here since you were an infant, right? That's what I've, I've heard, and we've loved every moment of it, okay? You have such a smiley face and such a joyous personality. You've always been the data guy. I think you were titled that many, many years ago. You're my data guy. And we worked a lot in data over the last couple of years, and I've appreciated all of your efforts. So, thank you. I mean, Sherry was just telling me one story after another. I won't embarrass you. I'll let Chief do that.
So, I wish I could tell some of the stories. I was going through pictures, and I was going to bring a couple pictures, but kind of fear they might not be appropriate for here, evidently. I didn't realize how much. So, retirement, you know, you know, what can we say about Assistant Chief McQuary, or Woody, as he's known throughout the fire service? I can tell you a little about Dave. I know Dave took interest in the fire service when he was very young. I think he was inspired by his father, who was a volunteer with Florence Fire Department. And Dave soon, when he was able to, became a volunteer firefighter for the city of Florence as well. That was in the 90s, probably 90...
96.
96. I was going to say 95. 1999, Dave was welcomed to the city of Erlanger. He was hired as one of the first of six original 24/48 shift personnel on department. They quickly moved through the ranks from firefighter, EMT, to lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and served as the interim chief for the fire department as well. Assistant Chief McQuary has added many accolades to his fire service career over the years. Dave was charter member of Local 4206. He served on numerous committees for the fire service and the fire department. He was a member of the Northern Kentucky Technical Rescue Team, and served on our, as our department grant writer for a new, number of years, and received many grants, saving the city quite a bit of money. So, those are just to name a few things, and the list goes on and on of all the great things that Dave has done. Dave will be greatly missed. With him, he takes a ton of knowledge, and, you know, that knowledge is, is not going to be replaced anytime soon. We've got a young department, and it, it's going to take a long time to get that knowledge. So, I'm hoping you've parted with as much of that as you possibly could. So, as many of you know, or may not know, the, the fire services, we kind of consider more like family, and anytime somebody retires, it leaves a void of some sort. And I can honestly say, this is a void that Erlanger Fire Department's going to have a tough time filling for a while. So with that, I thank you for your service, Dave. I am proud to call you my brother in the fire service, and I wish you luck in all that you do in the future.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Well, I didn't really have anything prepared, but I just want to say thank you to everybody. First and foremost, to my wife, Jamie. Thank you for the support over the years. For the 13 years I spent on shift, I know the schedule was tough to deal with on your own when I was gone. And then, coming to days, the 2:00 AM, "Hey, I gotta go," was not ever easy as well. And of course, dealing with the phone calls from Justin all the time, too, you know, interrupting things, but, love you, Justin. But Jamie, thank you, and I love you. To the men and the women of the fire department, thank you. It's been my absolute honor and privilege serving with you. You guys are amazing, and I can't say enough about you. The only thing I hope for you guys is that you just keep kicking ass. So, good job. Mayor, council, thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. It's nothing personal, but I'm not going to miss these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, front and center, bud. Ed doesn't like the spotlight at all.
No.
So, everybody look very directly at him.
So, as you know, as Chief mentioned, family. I mean, we spend a lot of time together. And it's not always work, stuff that we're talking about. You know, we talk a lot about life, we talk about our families, we share a lot of things together. And Ed sometimes comes off as maybe a hard ass, you know? He's out there basically bulldogging these contractors, making sure he's a good steward of what we want within the city. But as you get to know him, as I have for the last 12 years, he's, he can be a little soft. You know?
Just in the middle.
I mean, we talk about, me and Ed have shared time talking about faith. We talk a lot about grandkids. He absolutely adores these grandkids. He adores his family. And I think he adores the Erlanger family just as much. So, you know, Ed started with us in, or not with us, 'cause I wasn't here, but 99. He's put in 25...
There were a couple people back here that were here, and this person over here. Other than that, everybody else is a newbie.
And over the last six years, as you can see in the crowd, we've got quite a bit of knowledge in the crowd with Mr. Newman, Jason and Joe, of course, still on staff, Dale Wilson, and I can't remember, Ralph, yeah, Ralph. But that's over 100 years of knowledge that's left our department in the last five or six years, which is quite a bit. So, but they've left it in good hands, I feel like. We've tried to get as much knowledge as we can and squeezing out of Ed. But I also was thinking, you know, the amount of projects that Ed has been in charge of over his 25 years. I mean, we're talking all the street projects, all the capital projects with parks, facilities, millions of dollars that was basically in his hand to look over as he's gone through his 25-year career. I mean, and I hope you're proud of all of this.
Well, very much.
We're, we're proud of you.
Appreciate it.
I just wanna congratulate you on 25 years. Every day I come in, he tells me 11, or 10. I think we're at 11 tomorrow, right?
We're at 11, yeah.
11 working days left. He thinks it's funny. I see it as sad. We're gonna miss him. Be hard to replace him. I know he'll be around, he'll probably be calling quite a bit complaining since he's an Erlanger resident. I know he's got big plans after he leaves here September 1st. He's gonna hit the road. Hope you enjoy it. I wish you nothing but happiness and health. We're gonna miss you.
Appreciate it, buddy.
Love you.
I'm gonna miss you so much.
I have the same sentiments as Dave, you know? First person you had to thank is your beautiful, amazing wife, 'cause she has put up with a lot for me. Not always gone home happy. You have a rough day, and who gets to hear about it? Your wife. Dave talked about, you know, getting the call at 2:00 in the morning, same way in the Public Works Department. It's snowing, "Sorry, honey, I gotta go." And then, I get up and leave at 2:00, and then she has to try fall back asleep and get up and go to work at 5:00. But, yeah, so, I love you, you're amazing. Thank you for listening to me vent on those rough nights. It's been a great ride here at the city of Erlanger. I appreciate everybody here. I've been through four mayors, four public works directors, five fire chiefs, and six police chiefs, and a bunch of council members, two city attorneys, and one city engineer. Jim Vioxx rocks. And Jim has helped me out and has taught me more than anybody will ever know. And I owe a lot to that man. He's a great man. I just thank you for my career here, and I can't wait to, can't wait to leave y'all and go on a big, long vacation. Thank you all very much.
Hey, Ed, what was the hardest project you've done here? What was the most difficult?
I'm just saying.
I set you up for that one. And you made it happen, dude. You really did. And I'm so appreciative. I will remember you forever because of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There is nobody listed as public comment. There you go. Mayor's report. So, last Tuesday, we had our Cherry Hill Public Workshop to talk about the Erlanger Road, the new park that we are working on creating. And from my understanding, we had like close to 70 or so residents that came out to participate. A lot of council members were there, which was so greatly appreciated as well. Public Works team, we had La Rosa's for dinner. So, thanks to Public Works Director Kevin Quinn. Just a really awesome night of community engagement. I mean, to have 70 people that are interested enough to take time out of their evening and come and visit with us is really special, first of all. And then, to be able to talk individually to these, these people and answer their questions and try to be as transparent and open with what we're doing as possible. I mean, that, that is our goal. We are so excited about what we're doing that we wanna just shout it from the rooftops. And Tuesday, last Tuesday was the perfect opportunity to do so. So, I hope everybody is truly excited. Obviously, there's always gonna be some hiccups, and there's always gonna be some questions and concerns. And hopefully, we'll be able to address all of those as necessary and just hop over one hurdle at a time. So, thank you for everybody that participated. City Administrator's report, Mr. Glenn.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Speaking of the Cherry Hill Workshop and the park that we're doing along Erlanger Road, so what we're planning on doing on September 24th at 10:00 AM, 24th at 10:00 AM, we're going to be doing a groundbreaking for the proposed dog park. So, and we'll follow up with some more invitations to everybody and reminders and everything, but on September 24th, we're gonna do a groundbreaking and celebrate our great new proposed project. Along those same lines, we're gonna be doing the Cahill Commons ribbon cutting, and that is going to be on the 7th at 10:00 AM. So, that's confirmed. So, that would be great for everybody to come out that Saturday morning and celebrate that great park. That's a Phase 1, Phase 2 is all completed, and we're all 100% done, and it is fantastic. So, come out and celebrate that with us. This week, I'm gonna be sending out to everybody, all council members, the budget proposed timeline and for next year already. So, now that we concluded the budget process for '24, '25, it's time to be thinking about next year. And we wanted to kinda get everything laid out, how we're gonna do it, and especially when we're gonna do it, so that way, everybody can plan accordingly, 'cause I know it's a, it's a lot of things that council and staff has to do. And so, we'll finalize our discussions tomorrow morning on that internally, and we'll push that out to all the council members, so you can plan your vacations accordingly, 'cause everything's around, you know, spring breaks and stuff like that, so it's good to kinda have a year's notice on that. Couple small changes to that point. If, when we send that out, it's just a draft, so if there's any thing that you would like to see changed or whatever, just please get with me, and we can make those changes. And the last thing I wanna talk about is the summer send-off. Don't forget, that's the 21st coming up, and we're gonna have the Second Annual 5K Run. And leading the way will be Jack again this year. I do believe he's committed to doing that. So, he's gonna be the ceremony, the master of ceremony. I don't know. So, well, but anyway, we're gonna have the 5K race again, so that's great. And a couple great bands that Sherry and her staff have kinda lined down. It's gonna be a great time. So, that's the 21st. What time does it start? 4:00? 12:00? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Peter. All right, City Attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Yeah, I have a few items that are on legislation tonight. One that's kinda popped up that I wanted to kinda explain why it popped up. But first, we have the first reading of the ordinance as it relates to medical cannabis. That ordinance both overturns the county ban as well as is the text amendment to allow it in the various zones. The second one is the one that's kinda, or we're doing surplus property, which is standard. But then, the third one is actually the one that's kinda popped up a little bit, and, and we do apologize, we didn't discuss it at the caucus meeting. Frankly, we didn't realize it would be done through an interlocal agreement, so we didn't realize it was gonna have to be done through the caucus meeting. But what this is, is the interlocal purchasing system, which is based out of Texas, and it's something that Public Works wants to start utilizing. It's a cooperative purchasing program. Many cities throughout the state and nation use this cooperative program, but because technically, it is a cooperative program with another state, we have to do it as a formal interlocal agreement. I don't know, Kevin, if you have anything else you wanna add on that, other than...
No, that's, that's basically just a different avenue to be able to purchase items through the procurement policy.
Right. And, and just so council's aware, so instead of necessarily us having to send it out to bid, this entity does that whole process for us, very similar to what the state has historically done, but frankly, Kentucky's not doing that as much anymore, for whatever reason. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, report on capital projects, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works facility, the salt building, all the concrete for the salt building's been poured at the Public Works facility with the walls. Most of the drawwall in the administration area has been completed. They'll start mudding that and, and doing some sanding. Street striping project, street striping is gonna be starting here in mid-August, so all the long lines will be repainted, stop bars, all the turn arrows throughout the city. And ANA Safety will be doing that work. And then, the sidewalk replacement program, Humphreys Construction will be doing that. I know a big one that we have going on there will be the Depot sidewalk will be replaced, and they'll start doing some of that work here, probably early fall, so. Silver Lake Park, both shelter pads have been poured. Duke has installed both poles for electric. Humphre-- I'm sorry, Tomlin &amp; Sons will be doing the plaza, and then we accept to, we expect to receive the shelter August 13th, and have everything completed before summer send-off. Is there any questions?
Okay, one comment. On the Depot sidewalk, for those at home who are listening, you know, we're gonna be replacing all the, the brick pavers that make up that sidewalk. A lot of them are engraved. Those pavers that are engraved are gonna be repurposed, and we'll go install those around the flagpole. So, for those who have engraved pavers, they're not gonna go bye-bye with this project, they're going to be repurposed.
All right. Any other reports from department heads? Chief?
Yeah, just real quick. I'm sure everybody's seen it on Facebook, and I sent out the email last week, I think, but Thursday, we've got our PD Night Out. We wanna invite any and everyone to it. This is something that we have wanted to do for four years, and it's just, there's never a good time to get 50 people together to do it, and we just made the decision, and we're gonna somehow pull it off, I hope. So, looks like the weather's gonna be good, we're gonna have some really, really cool demonstrations. Canines are gonna be there. Guys have really put in a lot of work into some of the practical exercises that you're gonna see. So, it'll be a really good time to come out and see the money that you guys have allowed us to spend on training and equipment put to use. So, everybody come out and see us. We'll have food, starting at 6:00 PM until it's gone. And you guys know how the cops are, so you better get there early if you wanna eat, so.
All right. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, we've got some, a resolution in terms of legislation is also on our agenda today. That resolution is for two grants that we're going to be applying for, the Land and Water Conservation Fund and then the Recreational Trails Program. As you know, we've been working on different funding mechanisms and matrix to help us with our Erlanger Road project. So, these two funds will be stacked on top of that. We should hear pretty quickly into September whether or not the application was successful. So, quick update on that. Also, if you go back to watch our council meeting tonight, I wanna give a shout-out to Jim White, our technology person, who was able to run as a preamble some marketing efforts and videos that are running before our council meeting. So, we typically have a static American flag screen on there. So, Jim, if you're watching, thank you for helping us figure that out. There will be plenty more of those marketing projects on the slate. I know Chief Rader is ecstatic to be filmed tomorrow to talk about that police night out. That is all. Thank you.
Jim White is truly a national treasure. We love having him here. All right. Any other reports? Sherry? You good? Okay. Good, 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 all right. All right, reports from task forces? Okay. All righty. Bids this evening. Fire an EMS vehicle. Do you wanna talk about that, Chief?
Yes. So, this is to replace Assistant Chief Stewart's staff vehicle. We put a bid out, we got one bid back from Don Franklin, came at, came in at 42508. There were some issues that came with the spotlight, no rear door handles, 'cause it had, it was a police package. With those changes, it went up a little, but then, they wanted to give us a trade-in on the 2014 Chevy Tahoe that we wanted to put in surplus of $8,500. So, the total bid comes in at 34,847, which is below our budgeted amount, so we'll go ahead and move on with that.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, our HVAC.
So, our HVAC service went out to, for bid. We received four bids. Staff is currently going through all those bids to make sure everything aligns with what we want, and we're gonna eventually set up a meeting with the one we've selected to go through the bid and talk to them about everything they want from us, basically. So, like I said, staff is going through those currently, and the bids were within budget, so we'll be moving forward with one here shortly. And then, the other one is Jaeger and Hayden Street removal. We received five bids. Jefferson Contracting was a low bid at $315,000. We'll be moving forward with Mr. Jefferson, and he looks to start that project sometime in November.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any unfinished business? Ms. Kyle?
Mr. Hermes notified me that he wasn't gonna be at tonight's meeting, so he wanted me to bring up a topic for August caucus meeting to be added to the agenda, and it's in regards to the certificate of need. If you remember, about 18 months ago, we had a big meeting here, we had St. Eze, we had one of our state representatives, and eventually, we decided to pass a municipal order to reform the certificate of need instead of just eliminating it. While Mr. Hermes feels like there's nothing that has been done on this, the only thing I've seen are some reports from state representatives that it's been discussed, but I've seen no results either. So, I told him, I said, "Well, I perfectly agree with you. I don't know what we can do," but he wants to discuss it at the next meeting, the caucus meeting. And...
tax and tangible tax next caucus meeting. I'll be our... Let's see here. All right, we're on to legislation.
Right. Kevin, we're in so retrieve. First, we have an ordinance overturning the current Kent County ban on medical cannabis within the city limits of Erlanger and amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance to allow medical cannabis cultivation, processing, producing, and safety compliance facilities as permitted uses within the BP Business Park, FI Flex Industrial, and GI General Industrial Zones to allow medical cannabis dispensaries as a permitted use within the ROC, which is the residential office conversion, NC Neighborhood Commercial, CC Community Commercial, HC Highway Commercial, and MU Mixed Use Zones, and establishing new specific standards, required off-street parking standards, and defining medical cannabis uses and related terms. So, this text amendment went in front of PBS, and the Planning Commission approved it and recommended it at their July 10th, 2024 meeting. This is a first reading.
All right, Ms. Safin, if you can note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance, please.
Okay, next, we have a misorder of the city of Erlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 8208-3 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. You can see attached are the items and the disposition method. There are several chairs, a 2011, or chair pros, they're not really chairs, I guess, they're fire department...
Stair chairs.
Stair chairs. A 2011 Chevy Silverado, a Meyer Plow Model, a Salter V-Box Blizzard Ice Chaser, 2005 Jean Deere, and a 2013 X-Mark Ultra Turf Tracer. Reason for disposal of all of them is age and condition, and you can see the disposal methods of the two chair pros is trade-in, and of everything else is electronic auction.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle? Ms. Wilson? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
This is a municipal order of the city of Erlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement pursuant to KRS 65210 with the interlocal purchasing system tips. You can see attached to it is the interlocal agreement, which, yes, it's bizarre, it says Region 8 Education Service Center. This is what the website generates for the Kentucky interlocal. It's what we've been told to do by this program, is to enter this interlocal agreement, and this resolution authorizes the mayor to sign this document and any other related documents so that we can begin purchasing things through the interlocal purchasing system.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle? Ms. Nicely? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right. Are there any announcements this evening? All right. Seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Wilson? Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.